All right, time being seven o'clock. Calling the session the Halifax Planning Board for July 7th, 2022. All members are present. On the agenda this evening, we have an appointment and a hearing at 7:00 PM to be continued for Arcor LLC. We have discussions for 12 Sherwood Drive, Park Plaza, Curtin Brothers Oil and Pasture Lane. We have bills for the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds and Amory Engineers. We'll be reviewing minutes for June 2nd and June 16th. And going over other correspondence and other business, being the registry of deeds, signatures and the note of the comprehensive permit for the country called the states, 40B project hearing continued to July 13th. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So, seven o'clock, is anyone here from Arcor LLC? Okay, so this is going with it, waiting on feedback?
They'll be at the next meeting, the engineers are not available, so.
Okay.
I requested, and I put the extension form two back, just so she weren't still in there.
Okay. This is 60 days.
So, it will be continued from 7:21, 60 days, which would make it, sorry, September 19th?
So they'll be at the next meeting?
Okay.
It won't be at this meeting, but that was the last one. That was when you, um, 45 years ago, so I just get the 60 days.
Just to make sure that it covers the extra, okay. And make a motion, do I have a motion to accept the letter of mutual agreement, the extension for Arcor LLC? You have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
No room for me.
Yeah, just because it said it had, there were pictures in the folder, so I just wanted to see what the pictures were.
And then this was, these are the items I got from the board of selection, from on the end. The roads that weren't finished.
Yeah, I want to write them down, that guy.
These are the, that's the folder with the pictures in it?
Well, I don't think so, the emails from the, from Welby, um, Welby builders.
I did not.
Right, we should get into the road discussion.
Yeah, so, the, Mr. Gillespie?
Right now, Gillespie. He could not be, I asked him to come, but he was away, so.
So he said there's a homeowners association?
Yeah, I live in that development, I don't have a homeowners association. I said, I live there, there's a homeowners association.
Probably if he's looked at, the next thing, I forgot.
The letter of June 29th.
I just don't know, I don't know how you can make a statement like, there's a homeowners association who's responsible for maintenance, it's not on us.
He said the town accepted it, but as I said, there's a list there of the town of the streets that are accepted and it's.
Yeah, there's no S in your name, are you?
No.
Yeah, and either way, the, that responsibility is all, but I hate to say, it just seems like another attempt for him to just discredit and, um, leave himself from saying he's responsible.
So, my, my thing is, is that to make a statement like that, that doesn't have a preface to it of, perhaps there's a homeowners association, for him to say, there is a homeowners association, like, there isn't? So that, to me, is a big question mark.
Did the town accept the road?
Town, no, not.
No.
Town hasn't accepted any streets in the, in the whole development there. I checked this out.
Yeah. So.
Yeah, I don't remember voting on that at all, the town.
I mean, I think you made a reference in the letter saying that it went to the selectmen and the selectmen vote to accept the roads or not, is that how it works?
The selectmen would be the last.
Yeah. And, uh, the, the list there shows none of the streets in the.
You have outstanding issues?
Yeah, so typically, once, once the ASB would be created, uh, completed by the engineer, it would come to us, it would be reviewed, once we approved that, it would be sent to the selectmen as our recommendation to accept. So they would take our, our acceptance of the ASB and our.
Do the streets involved, the inspections in ASB also, you know, like, as in, if they're actually inspected and completed, because talking with highway, there's a lot of work to be done on the streets.
I mean, not just that.
But they're also like 20 years old now, too.
Yeah.
Plus 20, he started about in the 90s.
Yeah, I was, I was in the board when that went through.
Say, my house was built in boom three, and it's on Arrowhead.
So all of them, all the, the, see the most of the file, right, they show where it needed, where it.
Harvest was, oh, that's different.
So what's the next step to solve this problem?
Uh, contemplating now, and. I believe on this one, there was a certain point that we reduced the bond to 10,000 based on the work that was completed and what was expected to be needed at the time. So I believe we have 10,000 in a bond on this project.
I think there's a, nothing, I believe there's a letter in there that says that you used for 10 to 5, goes further on that.
No, no, that's.
There's a note in there that it was reduced to 10, maybe there's some in there.
Yeah, I think, yes, the residents actually sent us that. Okay, so, yeah, so the release was 10,000 and the remainder was kept at 10,000.
Also, was it from 20 to 10, is that?
Yeah, in 2018, um, Welby builders requested the bond release of 20,000, and as discussed, the ASB had been received, only issue is if the board releases the bond in full, the developer may not get the road complete, except.
So, I have a question, when we accept these roads, we should be writing some sort of a letter that they would be able to have as proof, like in recording at the registry or something, right?
Yeah, so once we, once we accept the ASB, I believe we have to write a formal, um, recommendation to the selectmen to approve and accept the road. Our recommendation is to accept, and then, yeah.
So we've been missing doing that for a while, apparently, because Highland Woods started in the 90s and all, like, uh, Ry Meadows done, everything, all those streets are fully bulk-built for years.
Yeah, on the project that large, that's to be accepted, before you think about that, I mean, I'm just gonna pull a number and say, there's more than 20 houses out there, so the first three or four are gonna get done, if you know what I mean, so that is typical, where you would expect the building phase to be multiple years, you would expect that, you would expect the ASB to be years down the road and.
Right, but some of them should have been done by now.
Some of the roads?
Some of them should have been accepted.
So I'm not sure if this was.
Or follow that line.
I'm not sure if this was broken up into sections, I don't know how it was released or approved, it may have been phase one, phase two, phase three.
Well, I think that some of the streets might have been phased out, but to finish Highland, you probably wouldn't cut into circles, so you wouldn't cut that into phases, because.
There'd be each, each cul-de-sac.
Yeah, that would probably be a phase, like a part of the bond, right?
I would say, if I had to guess, there's probably 55 houses in the development, figure seven per cul-de-sac, and then, you know, another 20 in the circle.
Yeah, I would say that's.
So is that how it works? Sorry, you release the bond when the road gets accepted by the selectmen?
Town meeting.
Town meeting to accept the road?
Yeah, town would have, the town, I believe, does do the final vote to accept.
Turn to just ruin it.
After the recommendation.
I thought something happened.
Uh, I thought it was the selectmen voted on it, I didn't know.
Well, it says here, like, in some of the minutes from Highland Woods, this is from Sherwood. It says here that they wouldn't have been able to make town meeting to accept the road after the selectmen wrote, I'll, I'll read it exactly, I'm just looking for it exactly, I just read it. Anyway, that's something that we should.
So as of right now, it looks like we are holding 10,000 for Sherwood, for Sherwood Drive to Welby Builders. As far as enforcement, unfortunately, we don't do that much at all. I do find it strange where if in 2022, he claims, this is Paul sharing, Don Gillespie claiming, that the project was finished seven years ago, but they came in four years ago to ask for some release of the bond, which means they know undoubtedly that it's not complete.
That's the last communication too, right?
So that's all we can, all we can go off of as far as moving forward.
So it was done, they'd want their other 10 grand, you would think.
If it was done, they wouldn't have had to ask us.
Right.
To release part of the bond.
So you'd never seen, there's never been an ASB that come by this board for any of Highland Estates?
I don't know, because I'm really, I was.
Because that must have been done in phases, a project that big.
And I know that there was different builders that worked on it, so I don't know if, I don't know if they, they did a spur and then sold an entire section or another road, um, that, I just don't know, but like I say, I know it's, it was over multiple years with different builders.
2008 happened, and then all of a sudden.
Here it is.
Half the builders were losing too much money and walked away from it, and then somebody else picked it up to finish it.
So, this says here that members discussed amount to release 5K or 10K, and members want enough money for any repairs until road is accepted, they would like to keep enough money in an account to ensure the developer continues to move forward for acceptance through the board of selectmen to get on warrant for the next town meeting. Release 10K and keep until.
So what's to keep us from just saying, finish, take care of this, and then you get your other 10K, satisfies everybody, right? They just don't want to do the work?
It seems like it, because the response that we got back from them was simply, this project was finished, any issues appearing now are the responsibility of the homeowners, which.
So why don't we ask town council if we can use the remaining $10,000 that they have in their bond to finish the drainage building?
So Welby did, builders did all of Sherwood Drive, so they owned the road and everything, had to do all of it? Is that how it works?
Welby said they, they did Sherwood extension, is there any for Sherwood?
Yeah, the extension, yeah.
He said that he, believe there are eight road, eight houses that he did on Sherwood extension.
Okay.
That would make sense.
This is Aaron, that's Highland.
So this is labeled just extension. So, just, so we're all, if this is the part that Welby is responsible for, it would only be this extension past the original cul-de-sac and what I see as 10 lots, oh, excuse me, it's 11 lots.
But this one comes from Thompson?
Yeah. So, at some point, when we released the 10,000, it was because we had noticed that they had less than that worth of work to complete. So, in our records, we would have somewhere the, the latest review.
I did see a review over here, it could possibly be misfiled, huh? You see it? It'd be on the side. 2013. This was probably the beginning review in 2013. Um, this is 2015.
The latest one I have in front of me is 17, which, obviously, about a year before they asked for that, for the release of half of the bond, roadway. All right, so unfortunately, this was for the inspection of the top course, it does not actually give an up-to-date report on what was, what was completed.
No, who did the inspection?
No.
Because it makes mention in this letter also to, in the email, that everything's been approved, okay, everybody got approved by, you know, that was it, just everything's been approved.
Where's your letter from us, right?
Yeah, seems pretty ambiguous.
With the town board stamp that they went to town meeting, that's what we should make sure on the quad, I'm like, where's your stamp?
Again, if all the work had been completed, there would be the partial release.
Right, in 18, four years ago.
Right.
So, whose authority is it to enforce the completion of the project?
Most likely, where we are not the enforcement board, it would most likely fall on zoning enforcement officer.
Okay, what about that? Given the most up-to-date information we have, and forgive me for not taking an email from the person that's on the hook saying that they're good, um, as.
Yeah, I don't think so, that word.
No, me either. Perhaps we should send our evidence, for the lack of a better word, up to zoning, and say, we feel as though that this needs to be enforced to finish the project, to satisfy the request of the residents of Sherwood Drive, and there's a partial bond that obviously shows that work still needed to be completed, and we would like for you to take action on this to complete the project.
Second.
Yeah, there's a motion.
So, I would entertain something like that as a motion, but certainly, I think that we have to make sure it's addressed to the enforcement officer, not the board itself, which would be the building.
Yeah, whoever's in charge of enforcing this.
But I also think we're, maybe we should ask more for assistance, because I don't know that he necessarily is 100% the guy.
Okay.
So, maybe if we could ask, possibly get him into one of our meetings to discuss it, to see if, between all of us, if we can come up with something.
So let's invite.
Because there is a case in there, he, he does make reference to where he was asked the question, that's not me, go ask the planning board, you know, so I don't know if this is the same thing.
So, so it might be easier for us to.
Or does it make?
Do it together.
Does it make more sense, because clearly this is, and I keep using the phrase in my emails above our pay grade, um, does it make more sense to kick it to the board that it most likely falls on their pay grade, and then we assist, or one of us, chairman, uh, goes to at least that meeting to be a part of that?
Again, I don't think it's a board issue, I think the, like I said, it's not going to the zoning board of appeals, but the zoning enforcement officer, who is different, so in, in this town, it happens to be the building inspector, kind of has two hats, so I think it's more to him than it is to a town or a board meeting.
Is there a way, is there a way to find out directly from him if that is in his jurisdiction, for the lack of a better word? Um, because what I don't want, what I would hate to have happen, especially obviously because the residents of Sherwood Drive would like to get this done sooner than later, and I'd like to not have two pasture lanes on our agenda, um, to reach out and say, hey, this is the situation we're dealing with, is this in your, um, is this in your jurisdiction, or is this your plate to deal with? And if he says yes, then we say, could you please take care of this? If it's no, then we, where, where would we send it to? Because if we request him to come to the next meeting, he comes to the next meeting, we ask him, and he goes, not me, we're right back where we started today, and I prefer not to do that.
Okay. So why don't we add to what you stated at first about asking him about it, say, we believe this could be your jurisdiction, if so, can you do the research and let us know and come to the next meeting?
I can always do my best, well, I can get in there and see if I can get in there during the week before our meeting and ask the question.
What if I made a motion that we reach out to the enforcement officer, um, to ask him if this is in his jurisdiction to handle, and if it is, then we move forward with asking him to enforce it, and if it's not, we request who that should be, so that at the next meeting, we can make a motion to push it to whomever that would be, because it's clearly not us.
Yeah.
That was a motion.
Second.
So, I have, I have a motion to contact the zoning enforcement officer, asking whether or not he believes he is the enforcement officer for the bond.
Yeah.
And.
If he is?
And if he is, we would like him to enforce it.
And if not, who would it be?
Could he, could he give us the information?
What's the protocol for the bond?
Right.
Second.
That is his motion, do I have a second?
Yes.
I have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Beautiful.
Aye, and you're gonna support your motion?
Oh, aye, yes, I definitely support that.
Okay, next point of discussion will be Stacy Boyes for Park Plaza, bath, essential manufacturer of Park Plaza.
I'm not sure, I'm new here. I'm not sure he owns this.
Yeah, right there, yeah.
Stacy?
Yes.
Hi, Don.
Nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
So, uh, what brings you in the season?
I'm going to have it, home manufacturer, no retail, only at 418 Plymouth Street, and if we run it, then we send it to you, and basically, um, similar to that, from the bath truffles, my body lotions and baby sauce, and the selectmen said I have to come to you, that I don't need to see them because there's not processed food being made. We would be using half, zero T, Steve, but he are 100% T, legal person, if that matters, I would like to mention that. That's pretty much, just getting your approval before I apply for my MDA license, everything else will be there.
Just, just on, I'm, I'm sure, on this, would, you know, which, which, I don't know which.
It's directly to the right of Rodney's Pizza, corner 430 Park Street, the plaza.
Okay.
Rodney's is all the way to the left.
So which one?
Directly to the right of that.
But he would share a wall?
No, there's a separate.
It shows two bakers, so I just wanted to be sure.
Yes, baking is 420, 420 is gonna be a bakery.
Okay.
I don't know if they've come before you yet, I just know it's gonna be a bakery, upcoming, and somebody else is taking over Rodney's, it's gonna remain Rodney's, but his brother-in-law's getting surgery, is why a different owner's gonna take it over on that, but you might already know that.
He's a employee of Rodney's, right?
Yeah, and, yeah, church is the one that owns the plaza, as long as I can, so he can be my partner and all this, and this is my, have our general point.
Have our come up with a point.
Hopefully, we'll bring a few small jobs to them.
Enough to be glad.
Can you just, hold on, if we can have, hold on, let's just have one person talk in the class, if you don't mind. So if this is Rodney's, if we.
So, if this is Rodney's, it would be this one? Only because if, we don't have the numbers marked, that's why.
That's right, I mean, so you're sure, because usually I'm, I'm used to coming in the Plaza from the address, from Wayne, so that's probably.
Yeah, so it would be enough here, so it's directly next, so, so, do you know what?
Directly next to Rodney's, it's 418.
Okay, so I'm just...
And that one's 420, which will be a bakery, that one they come before you.
Okay.
Now, this one, this one here is twenty-two hundred square feet, this one over three thousand, if that makes any difference, I don't think it should, I might, that one's like an extra foot.
Rodney's, okay.
If that makes any difference.
It may, as far as, we're just gonna have to take a look to see how the pop-in, what you had for spots, to make sure that it works with what you're proposing now. I don't know what this was before, which was part of the...
Yeah, there's not a major kitchen or anything, no meeting events, or any lobby there.
Right? So, was the, do you know if the karate place?
No, no, that was over on the gym, behind the church. Behind the church was, or is gonna be a gym, the church is going out.
Just, I just wanna make sure that we're familiar with what the use of this was prior, so we can tell the change.
The tent was gonna be for a cafe, Rodney's was gonna turn it into a cafe, but that didn't end up happening because of his situation, so right now it has some restaurant equipment that we need to get out, assuming you approve us to clear it out and totally redo it and get it up to total legal standards.
All right.
What's this zone? Where they gonna, I mean, like, were they doing any factoring or whatnot, would it make a difference?
It's mostly like a bath bomb machine and some melting equipment, no overhead exhaust, something like that.
I don't know, I'm asking.
Yeah, no, I understand your point.
Like I said, there'd be no reason, a bunch of traffic, or anything like that.
So, the fun part about town bylaws is it doesn't really matter what, what your situation is for going in there, it's how it's zoned and what we have to follow, so we just try to find, is, collect as much information from you guys, so we can make sure that it falls within the bylaws, so, and if there's gotta be a tweak here or there, we can at least guide you after.
I don't know what that's holding in there.
Well, that wouldn't even matter, I get it, it wouldn't matter, it wouldn't matter to what you're doing, but it matters to the bylaws.
Yeah, so I wanna make sure and do everything up to standard. I've purchased a lot of expensive stuff.
Do you have to go, you have, while you're, do you mind if I ask? No, one person's talking. No, that's cool. Just so you have to go to the Board of Health after us, once we review, is that, what's the next step in there? I wasn't sure if the Board of Health...
If it involves food, I would have to include any on the board.
I wasn't sure with the Board of Health, just like, your manufacturers, some people are putting on their skin. All right, so I think that would be the key, is to figure out exactly what you're asking for and what that falls under.
Yes.
So, could you explain, I'm gonna, I'm gonna write it down, what exactly it would be making?
It's cosmetic products, it's actually, yes.
Right, so it's cosmetic.
Yes, we do high-end luxury cosmetics and mixes for things, dry mixes, there's no cooking, no baking.
All right, so that was nice, no ovens, no heat apparatus, open flame?
None of that.
Most of...
No gases.
All right. So, light processing, packaging?
Yeah, some melting, or refined raw cocoa butter, coconut oil, beeswax, essential oils, that type of thing. And like a bath bomb machine, makes the bath truffles, because it's only one ingredient different.
It's all done through one, like, six-foot machine, that does anything.
More like an easy bake oven kind of a thing, more like an easy bake oven kind of a thing, it's like a little mechanic.
Salt machine.
Actually, no baking, it's just compressed.
No, I just was using it as an analogy, yeah.
Yes, correct.
How many employees?
At most four.
At full capacity?
Yeah, at most four.
And no?
No, Rachel.
Would that be including you too?
Yes.
The four?
It could lead to more, it could lead to another two more boys, so four to six total. That makes one.
How about deliveries, truck supplies, or not?
It's involving, so it would not be any large delivery trucks, and a lot of the providers that we have have their own small delivery trucks, like, small, like, school personal van size, so it's nothing large or...
Hours of operation, maybe?
And it does have a back door around the back, where it wouldn't be really affecting anyone for things, for like one small pickup ship.
What would be the hours of operation?
Standard Monday through Friday, I don't really tend to buy the idea of doing that.
I don't know if there was any processing going on, you know, night-wise.
Thank goodness, no.
Big part of building your own company is getting big dollars, yeah.
And everything, we might do some nights and weekends, so it'll be us trying to get it going ourselves, with no employee, but then it'll be just days. It's just getting it going.
Do you have any other stores of this nature?
I do Maine, and then I work with actual T H C licensing and product development in Massachusetts, Maine, and Big Island, and a couple other small states that I develop for, that I develop for celebrities, who different companies as well, which is part of what this will be catching on, is they want their own antique cosmetics, topicals, and dry mixes, that will go out eventually to those bigger companies.
I also do them in T H C, that's a separate brand, that's the licensed inspection, I don't, I do not, but yes. Branded in three states, I'm coming out in Michigan legally next month. Yeah, and Massachusetts, about, I'm about three months in T H C, but they're doing all that for me, and this has zero T H C here, that's I promise.
What is your, Mark, what's your initial? I think that it's really gonna come down to what type of use it is, and that's gonna kind of either restrict us or tell us what you need for what that site needs to provide. I believe right now that that site had seen, either that one or next door, with the karate place, candy job, thinking about a hundred years.
Is that where the laundromat was too?
I think so.
So, as far as use, amount of traffic flow, and any safety issues, or things that that building should be providing you for the type of activity you're doing inside, that would be my concern as far as the, if it's light manufacturing, if, if that building is up to provide you what you need for that.
So, what is the current licensing on that area?
That's what I'm not sure, and I still have...
Your Commonwealth laws, it's commercial.
But that's it, just commercial?
It's just commercial, we're gonna have, is that a special permit type thing, or do you change zoning?
Answer the question, yes, there, you can do a change of zoning, which involves the town position of the town, and then it would take over that town, so I don't wanna say that you can't.
It's just a problem.
Walking around, right? So, most of the information I have in the folder right now, I have the receptive plan, and when they proposed some outdoor seating.
Rodney's is more, Rodney's has outdoor seating, or had.
So, if I'm hearing you correctly, if we can figure out what it was approved and zoned as before.
I don't think, I don't think anybody agreed that it's much, right?
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
So, what I'm hearing you say is that if we can figure out what it was zoned as before, if it would fall under satisfying what they're looking for more, then it's not... It's not considered a change of use.
Yeah.
So, right now, it may, if it's light manufacturing from karate tool, I would consider that change of use. And is that something that can be done, as simple as a special permit, so that they don't have to go in front of the town? If it is a change of use, I don't know.
We could look into a commercial to find us too, because...
But also, I think, I think what would really help too is us trying to figure out exactly, like, what you do, yeah, so...
We were told to come to figure out what we needed to do, so this is like a meeting to...
Exactly.
So, I think that's something, if you could put in writing, something that kind of describes what you do, and then we can see how to apply that, because I don't see an issue right off the bat with what you're doing, like I said, but without knowing the types of things that you would have in there, I'd be hesitant. I think probably the easiest way to go about accomplishing that is if you put in as much detail as you can think in writing about your entire process, from delivery all the way to out the door, right, just your process, and then we can find out what it was zoned as prior to. Now we have what your entire process is. Yeah, so, certain other things that would help, just to jot down number of employees, hours of operation, I know you mentioned it here, but if we just had it all together, yeah, then we'd have a great idea. I mean, right off the bat, I don't think so, but I'm not sure.
We don't think it's as simple as just going for a special permit to have a manufacturing of small little items, and that's...
That's what she needs, that's what she needs.
You know, like up across from the post office, you know, that's still commercial/business, but yet they do light manufacturing there, but I think like what Amy said, with by definition of the light industrial use, and, and what she showed, it would require a special permit.
And that we should just have her agree, apply for that, for a special permit, and not delay her, because, think about...
Who goes through the special, I'm sorry, who goes through the, where's the special permit for that, would be here or the zoning board there?
I think it's here, because it's a use...
In your mind, getting us your process in writing would be a great start.
They're not gonna have that, you know what I mean, so like, because it's...
Might be gonna do it earlier, I don't wanna promise you anything, but...
You can get a special permit in a business zone for light industrial use, but there wouldn't be mixed zoning, or what would be referred to as spot zoning, so that one spot is just zone, light industrial, you'd get a special permit for it, but at least in my experience, I don't know.
I still think it'd be good, what I was just explaining to the ladies, is I still think it would be good to get in writing from them at some, what their entire process is, to include that in the special permit. How long is the time, what's the timeline on the special permit?
They'd have to apply, they'd have to...
Advertise.
So, they wouldn't connect to us.
Give everybody time, you'd have possible appeals.
Yeah, depending on, so it's a list in the paper, kind of, you know, it knows.
Yeah, it would be an issue of question.
That's why I'm thinking that they should go and start their application for a permit now, and then that way we might be able to see them in August, and they might be able to open in September. Could we do both, if you guys have a...
No, you need a special.
I don't, I just, I'm sorry.
No, no, I'm just laughing.
All right. So, I understand the thing of not holding them up, I just, I don't wanna send them in a direction where I don't know what direction they need to go, that's why, that's why I'm kinda thinking of the clarification first.
It would be easier with the verification, right? So, what would the timeline be if we emailed that to you by tomorrow, would it be coming to the next session?
It would be coming to the next meeting.
Okay, that's all I needed to know, and in that time being, it would be prudent, then we could do the special application, licensing, fill that out, and get that going.
And then if you needed it, and then we're ready to go.
That's what I'm thinking, we go both lines there, and kind of plan for best, hope for worst kind of situation.
Right.
Okay, cool, perfect, thank you guys.
Sounds good to me. Yeah?
I'm just looking for the chat, because it's just, like...
You found it quick, and then...
And now I can't find it.
Best case scenario, we find some clarification between now and the next meeting.
Exactly.
And we find out a little bit more in detail about what your process is, and we'll have a better idea of which direction to point in the next meeting, and you'll have a definite timeline.
One sixty-seven three gives the definition of it, so if it met the definition of light manufacturing, but you didn't expect, wish it was, and it was in a business zone, under a special permit, was a law, or was it a special permit?
Light industrial use, and industrial enterprise such as manufacturing, storage, processing, fabrication, packaging, and assembly that does not create a nuisance from the noise, vibration, smoke, flare, radiation, flashing, or other emissions to adjacent properties. Further said, light industrial use shall not be a hazard to public safety or health, nor have noxious or toxic waste byproducts. Do we have any toxic or?
No.
Right, because you'd be putting it on your skin and bathing you. All right, you're speaking our language, okay. So then, in the use districts, that's commercial. And then the chart's one sixty-seven seven, and if you go to light industrial, which is, you found it now again, Brett?
What is it, one sixty?
One sixty-seven twenty-five, like, the page on the bottom, one sixty-seven twenty-five. And it says industrial uses, light industrial uses, including manufacturing, storage, processing, fabrication, packaging, and assembly is in the business district's special permit. So, I think we should just have them apply for a special permit. Right?
Except for, I think it doesn't say...
Oh, oh, well, good thing, good thing this is the one. I got this from the town board.
I appreciate it, that's what I was getting at, cool. All right. I think it's a special permit.
I think we should just have them apply for a special permit.
That is it.
It's yes.
I, I, yes, I agree. Well done.
Unless, yeah, thank you.
After further review.
Yeah, thank you.
It will require a special permit for light manufacturing.
Okay, and then we'll do that in an area that has multi-purpose in it, is that what, that is just to change it with that one area?
No, you won't have to change it.
Yeah, so there will be no change, yeah, that's why it is the special permit, because it's not by right, exactly.
Do you think, Mom, they would grant a permit like this, or?
I don't know about these people. Wonder who approves that? Don't know how many bath bombs went up. Do you have a wife that just came for a...
Oh, yes, I was gonna say.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. The board would certainly answer that.
Thank you guys so much, I appreciate your time, thank you. Good luck when you're on the state sees.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on. Kurt Rose, email from Tony Curtain, of the Skid Mountain Fuel Tank. All right, so, looking for a skid mountain fuel tank, and just with clarifications, being on the Skid Mountain, being not permanent, you have, is it on the... Just with clarifications, being on the skid mountain may not permanent, you have, is it on the ground?
The ground slab surrounded by walls.
Okay.
It'll be hard wired, that's pretty much the extent of it.
So would there be capacity underneath it or it's not really in a?
That's just a blunt tank that's not. Just for scale.
Okay.
Doesn't have that invention, does it?
Basically six point four.
Thank you.
It's another D's you take.
How would it get filled?
By me.
Any knocks.
So my issue would be that you're not constructing anything. I just don't know, I almost think that it would be only for the storage, which isn't really an issue for us and it's not large enough, I don't think.
Typically it's only the fire chief. Fire chief, no. Building inspector, no, so I just sent here.
Well.
There must be a hundred of these, I probably can add two hundred tanks.
So.
All the fire chief.
I don't know if anyone else does, I believe that's it. I believe that you would have to talk to him on that for the, the size and.
Industrial uses in the business zone need a special.
But it's not a building.
Not a building, no storage.
They mainly just want to see where it's stored, that's all.
Still on the bylaw.
I don't think so, I don't see how that applies.
Because it's a storage of a. Of a gas or a toxic fuel. That's why.
But it's not for industrial use.
It's still an industrial use. And, and a business district.
But if he's not. I don't see how it's an industrial use.
Because when we go back to.
But if you're, so if you're.
It's a motor fuel.
Do you see where I'm getting at?
Is it all diesel?
Yeah, yeah, so a gas tank, right, so.
It's just on road for your own truck.
It's not, he's not using it there.
You see, it's gonna sit in a tank or is it just gonna, what's it gonna have for, if it's, you know, if it leaks?
It's explosive proof.
The tank itself?
Fire guy tank.
Alright.
So similar, so we, we have a few of them in town. The most recent one is actually down at the end of the street and that is just, it's just up on legs. That's all it is.
It's the same thing, that's a ten thousand gallon tank, but it's exactly the same thing.
Okay, alright, same.
It's gonna be.
It's like.
Caps unimpacted, well, one of the two tanks. Basically.
Light industrial use and industrial enterprise such as manufacturing, storage, processing, fabrication, packaging and assembly that does not create a nuisance from noise, vibration, smoke, glare, radiation, flashing or other emissions to adjacent properties. Further said, light industrial use shall not be a hazard to public safety or have, nor have noxious or toxic waste byproducts, which that does.
But he's not using it in the industrial sense where he's not using it there to produce.
It's storage.
But, yeah, but that's if you were, if you were proposing some industrial use that included storage. Like that's how that, that's how that's worth, right?
It's the use of storing fuel in a business zone, which is a light industrial use that needs a special permit, which you could probably get, but you do need a special permit.
Can I ask a stupid question? So if we have one right up the street, I don't even need to say that. If we have one right up the street.
On Dunham property.
I got it. But one was, so that had to have been approved. Can we find out? Was that approved that?
Yeah, we had like no jurisdiction over it.
Who did?
Why not? It came before us.
Well, you should have had, I wasn't here for that, you should have had.
Yeah, but who had jurisdiction to approve that?
I believe that went through the fire department and they got their approvals.
Is there a way to find that?
Yeah.
Cause, cause.
Yeah, could use it as some sort of reference.
Under my understanding, a lot of this stuff is set by precedent, which is why we have to stick to the bylaws because when we give one person, we have to give everybody because we set the precedent. So if we have one right at the end of the street.
I like to look at everything in a thing, but I know what you're saying. But as, as far as to figure out what our process is, we, we can use that certainly.
I guess, so yeah, I think it's starting there, but I think the bigger, the bigger question is, is it even in our jurisdiction for that being a lack of a better word? Because if Mr. Curtain feels as though it's the fire department, the fire department has an interim chief, he's not sure, so he sends him to us and it's not even our thing, but we have an example of the street that is currently passed and it was the fire department. We can send Mr. Curtain back to the fire department, tell the chief, well, the previous time precedent was set, so now you make the decision.
Except for the fact that it might have been missed that because in our bylaws right here, if you read this and then you go to our use chart, it flat out says it. And so just because somebody else might have not followed it, if you read that light industrial use.
And that's ten thousand gallons.
Storage, processing, fabrication.
Is that the town's tag?
Accessibility needs a special permit, it's pretty clear. It's not like.
There's also the one.
And you have the residents.
So how would that have been passed just because? I got it. I got it. Totally got it.
Doesn't mean it was correct.
Right, okay.
The only thing I could find on was that there were state and local laws that have to be filed, applications through the EPA. Or that, that's the only thing that grew, came up with.
I believe that's what, that's what this.
But somebody had to have applied for the ten thousand gallons down here, whether it be Steve Hayward or whomever. So they must know who approved it and what the process was.
To Amy's point, just because it was approved previously by whoever was making that decision doesn't mean it was necessarily done by way of the bylaws. And I hate to say that or make any accusations, which I'm not, I'm just simply saying, I would like to use that as a precedent because it's the easiest way to get the job done.
Right. There was another one up at DFI also, you said, Mark?
Or the property adjacent, but you know, the driveway that always let it back if you didn't go up by.
Oh, yeah.
Light circuit, yeah. So to the side there, there's a large. Tank.
Trying to think if there were any other ones.
Those are the only two I have.
Yes, I do.
If you don't mind just sending.
Sure, Karen Taylor, a resident on Paddle Boss Water Road. What difference is this than the previous, it was already stated, Ari went forward from the planning board to the zoning board and it was denied for sixty thousand gallon tank. And he did have to get a special permit because it said that there was storage of, you know, oil or gasoline. And that was denied and he filed a appeal and the appeal was denied because it did not meet what the town aesthetics are. And, you know, we have, the community came to the meetings and voiced our concern that we don't want it. You know, it doesn't meet the bylaw and now all of a sudden, after the appeal is denied, which was May twenty fifth, I believe it was. Now we bring something else forward, what difference? What?
I assume that this is not the same proposal.
But it's the same light proposal.
Excuse me?
It's the same light proposal. It's still above ground and he only has permits right now for below grade. So it's special permit.
Have them apply for a special permit.
And, and it went, the legal council actually looked at it, at the zoning board before it was denied. And then it was denied by the judge on appeal. So this is just, you know, in, in my layman's terms, a way to work around an appeal that should take two years for an appeal to be able to come forward for another option.
Alright, I, I understand, but I do believe that this sounds, this sounds significantly different. And you can't fault someone who gets denied a proposal to come up with an alternative. And that, that's, I believe that's what we're dealing with, this is an alternative.
The planning board approved it to go, but the ZVA denied it. It still would have to go forward through the ZVA for a special permit and it would also have to go to the selectment to be approved. But, I mean, I think there's other residents here from, that are concerned as well from the neighborhood and it's not something that we want. And there's a lot more that will be in the other meeting.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? What do you worry about?
Through, through, yeah.
Yeah, if you don't mind. Do you mind voicing your concern?
Yeah, there's lots of concerns, there's property values, there's health concerns, there's noise to take it out, to put it in. There's the nuisance of smell that it makes people nauseous and sick, we just don't want.
It's only a thousand gallons.
So what we have. I'm at my house, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, but these people have been awful to us, to the point that they stood in front of my house at night. Her, take your pictures of my house.
Mr. Kurt, please, just, just address it this way.
Sir, I, now I just stood in front of this.
Just give her, give her an opportunity, if you'd like to speak.
I haven't done. I'm, we've been here, how many years?
Forty years.
Forty years, we've never had a problem with anybody and, and we've been doing this for forty years. Not a problem. These people come here and now it's a big problem. Well, I, it was a big problem, we need these people to all have a place in, over across the street from us and down the way. Because I didn't want it, we came here from Brockton. This was gonna be our home and you people are trying to take everything away from us. And nobody should have the right to do that. And nobody should stand in front of my house at night, leaving little things and doing, saying things and it, it was, it's been awful, absolutely awful. And I'm so disappointed in this town and especially you young lady.
Excuse me, sir, I wanna, I wanna speak to this because it was addressed to me. It was addressed to me, I've never stood in front of their house, I drove by to see a sign to see if it was in the historical district and I took a picture which I forwarded to the committee for the ZVA. That, I've never stood in front of their house, I've never gotten out of my car. I slowed down and snapped a picture and they can see it because I forwarded to the ZVA committee. I have nothing against these people personally, however, he threatens me at the ZVA meeting, okay, that he knows where I lived and he's been by my house. That was a threat to me on public record.
That's false.
And, no, it's, it's on public record, okay?
You guys, I did this.
Go on, do.
I never threatened anybody in my life.
Just let her speak.
I have nothing against them, I spoke at the last meeting stating that if this was gonna be an industrial zone, okay, if you wanna go down to the industrial park and build something, we have no problem with that. It does not go wrong, there's safety concerns, there's lots of accidents there, it's just not where it's, and this is not just me, this is a petition that was forwarded to the ZVA committee with all members. There was two different petitions, I had one, there was another one from Cranberry, with all the residents signing stating that they do not want this.
Just, if you don't mind, I'm gonna interrupt, but on those, those petitions and that, that was for a previous project, correct? Not this proposal?
Not for this specific, but there's really, it's still, it's still the same concerns that we have of this project as we have as another. And it still needs a special permit because it, 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 he only has a permit possibly for underground storage.
Okay, I'm gonna bring it back to the board at this point. We always do, it's just making sure that each, we're applying the correct law, that's, that's what we're here to do. So is it of the board's opinion that it would be, it's an industrial use? That's the question.
It's an industrial use.
Why is that, why is it an industrial use?
Because you're storing fuel.
You're storing fuel in it, yeah, so let's.
Which the board's discussing, Mr. Kurt?
Yeah, yeah.
The board's discussing.
As far as storage, storage to facilitate industrial use.
No.
No, no, yeah, that's what it is.
It's a business district.
It's packaging to, to support an industrial.
Use, this is how the chart works, this is a business district. This is an industrial use.
I'm not using charts, it's just the words.
Yes, the industrial use, light industrial uses including manufacturing, storage.
Yeah.
Processing, fabrication, packaging and assembly, is this not a storage tank?
Is it for, is it for industrial use?
Because it's got an oil in it?
That doesn't mean that it's for an industrial use.
But that's what it's considered.
So if.
No, so just because something is a petroleum product doesn't mean it's an industrial use product.
For over the storage monster.
No, yeah, so if I put chapstick on my lips, it's a petroleum product, it's not industrial use. We have to go by what the use is.
Your plastic bottles for water also have oil in them, but that's a completely.
So your oil tank in your house is industrial use then?
I don't have an oil tank.
Just for example. Does anyone else on the board feel as if it's an industrial use?
I would ask if every gas station then would be an industrial use.
I don't think so, I don't think, I don't think anytime you store.
Oh, they do, but it's not an industrial use.
So this is requiring them to get a special permit, it doesn't mean they won't get it. It means that they have to apply for a special permit or else we're gonna have a lawsuit from all the neighborhoods for not following this bylaw and you have specifically seen that. And that is what it is, it is, that's what we're supposed to do, I have nothing against you guys, you have something against me.
But we don't.
Followed by.
So we have to make sure that we follow this, right? The regulations, so it doesn't matter like storage, not all storage is industrial use, we all agree that. So storage does not mean industrial use, this is light industrial uses including. So storage to facilitate light industrial use.
So light industrial use, if you read the definition, states what?
Can I ask a question before you do that? What is the downside to asking for a special permit?
There is no downside, it's just making sure that we do the right thing.
I understand that, but it seems as though there's a conflict of interpretation. So if we ask for a special permit, right, and they go through that process, it seems to cover all the bases, whereas if we don't ask for a special permit, we're now setting a new precedent.
Because if we ask for a special permit by something that should be by right, then we're imposing something improper on a resident. Like that's a home, you know what I mean? So if we're, if we are imposing things that should be able by right and we're on, we're in the wrong.
I have a question then, I have a question then for them, are you using the tank for your business?
It's the fuel trucks.
It's a business use.
That's commercial.
Which when you're using oil becomes a light industrial use.
Honestly, I don't know what those words mean when you put them together.
I don't, I don't get it.
When you're saying when you're used oil.
An oil tank in your house is not used to fuel your trucks or store fuel for your trucks, it's used for your heating.
Yeah.
It's a private use. This is a business use of storage, so a light industrial use says, an industrial enterprise such as manufacturing, storage, processing, fabrication, packaging and assembly that does not create a nuisance from. Noise, vibration, smoke, glare, radiation, flashing or other emissions to adjacent properties. It is an emission. Further said, light industrial use shall not be a hazard to public safety or health nor have noxious or toxic waste byproducts. And it is a toxic or waste byproduct.
But what? But what, um...
It's just a fact. I mean, it's just a fact. So that's from them for a special permit.
I mean, there must be a limit on how many gallons you can store.
We just had bat bombs go for a special permit, and now we're gonna let oil be stored in a thousand gallon tank, used for business, any business zone, when we have already gone through this in the town and we've already gone to court with this. So now we're gonna just completely ignore this here definition and use chart, because why?
So I had...
It's the opposite of what we're...
We are not, we are not, Mr. Carrington, we are making sure that we apply it correctly. That's...
So I have a hundred and ten gallon tank in my pickup truck that's used to fill heavy equipment, and all I had to do was go to the fire department and they get, they just wanna see where it's stored, and period, that was it.
It's different.
Why is it different?
Because it's not placing it on a property that's business. This is what the bylaws are for. This is what the bylaws are for. And you're clearly seeing that we have residents here that are gonna follow up on this, and it'll be put back.
They probably gotta get it right.
And that's who we're elected by, is all of the residents, and this is the bylaws that we're supposed to read and pay attention to, so that we don't have these problems.
So, you know how with site plans, to get rid of all the BS, we just started sending everything out for peer review?
We got no, who's gonna review this?
Yeah. I'm saying if, if the interpretation of the bylaws is clearly a, um, interpretation issue, and so I don't understand what the problem is with doing a special permit. Personally, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't see any issue with it, personally. I understand the residents. I don't live there, so all we can do is listen, for sure, but if there's such a misunderstanding or, or an interpretation issue of what the bylaws read or how they read, and maybe one day they'll be rewritten to be clearer, that'd be great, but at the end of the day, if a special permit crosses all the Ts and dots all the Is, if there's not any concern that it would pass through, then why wouldn't we just ask for that to be done?
Because it, because we only apply the things that, we only apply the things that should be, right? So when we do special, please, when we do special permits, when we do anything, we have to figure out what the right way to apply these things are.
Licenses and special permits, and it's clearly scenes in a business zone, you need a special permit.
So if we, if we were to just tell everyone that they just need a special permit, that's not fair, that's not right, that's not what these things say. So that, but I understand, that's why I don't wanna just go up and say a special permit.
So what's the alternative? If we don't do a special permit, just grant them the right to do it?
Is that we agree that he has the right to do it.
As a right.
As a right. So if he does have that right, it is not correct for us to impose a special permit process.
Because I...
If he has the right to do it. So do you understand?
Yep, I'm trusting him very well.
If I impose, if we impose that on him, then we've taken away his rights.
Yep, I get it.
But we've also taken away someone in the town that has bylaws.
That's why...
Does a gas station have a special permit? That's what I'm looking at right now.
So here's, um...
Well, I think as a board, we need to agree whether or not this is industrial use.
So...
Because if it is, then a special permit would be required. If we do not believe that it is an industrial use, then it would not be required, but you would still have to pass all safety provided...
I understand that, I understand.
In the information provided by the fire chief and all other applicable.
Okay. Before we continue to go down this road, let's take a big time out, okay? My question is, because, and I don't think I can use the right verbiage here of, I don't have a horse in the race, right? I don't know either side, right? But as, as residents, to your point, we have to do what's right for both the person applying and not stripping them of their rights, but also listen to the residents that have to live around. I think one of the things that also needs to be considered is the fact that there have been, um, applications to have bigger tanks. Now granted, sixty thousand gallon tank versus ten thousand gallon tank, that's a very different project, to your point, what you were saying, it's, it's an alternative, right? Which you cannot blame them for being shut down and then trying to come up with an alternative. My, my thought is, is that had there not been a previous application that was denied on multiple levels, to then now be put in front of a new process or a new project with a smaller tank, and then there still being a conflict of interpretation, I don't understand what the problem would be as our responsibility to say, just get the special permit, and if it's not a big deal, all we did was delay it by what, two weeks, a month?
Agreed.
But at least the special permit allows...
Because we took away the guy's right to do it.
But we also took away the residents that are sitting here, so you're ignoring all of the other residents who are sitting in the room and only paying attention to that.
If the other residents don't have the right to deny him, yes. If they may not have the right to deny him, I am not gonna deny him because of that.
Okay, so then let me ask you this. Is... Is, does it have a toxic waste byproduct?
I don't believe so.
Oil does not have a toxic waste byproduct?
Not with what he is doing with it, he's not, he is not...
If you're running a business with it, could it spill?
Listen, so the, he is not performing anything on the oil that has a byproduct, he's not doing anything to the oil. About what? I don't know.
Now I'm talking to you.
I have a point. First of all, I, I don't think, in my opinion, that this is a reapplication of the previous permit that was turned down.
Nope.
This is a completely different, this, this isn't...
There is replication.
Any, please. This isn't trucks coming in, refueling, going out for deliveries, coming back in, big tanks underground, this is just the fueling of his own vehicles, like, like down at the highway department, like elsewhere. So I don't look at this as a, as a reapplication...
Nope.
That should wait two years to, to be reheard again.
Right.
I think it's, it's strictly storage. I don't believe it's an industrial, that the fuel and the storage tanks and the, and the tanks themselves have an industrial use. They have a commercial use, he's gonna be filling up, you know, his own business trucks.
Can you define the difference between industrial, from my own knowledge? I'm not, again, I'm not defending or, or attacking. I'm, my question is, what's the difference between commercial and industrial?
Commercial is anything where you're making, industrial is anywhere where you're actually making something, if you wanna think about it that way.
Industrial, in my opinion, is, is the production of the manufacturing. He's not manufacturing that, the way that I'm looking at it, I'm looking at his pumping gas on his truck, so he can use his truck. I think, I think there are quite a few businesses around, even in, including or excluding Halifax that, when there's a lot of trucks being used, they have facilities on site.
What's the one at the end of the street used for?
Filling up the highway trucks.
Just fills up vehicles. So you see where I see it?
I'd like to, I'd like to default to what that was done, or what that was, what was used to.
That's not maybe done correctly because it's, and it's also municipal, and we have residents sitting here.
Okay.
We have residents sitting here that are, all, all I'm saying is that we should go through the process of special permit. I'm not saying that you shouldn't be able to have it, I'm saying you should go through the process of special permit. That's it.
There's a lot of, there's a lot of valid points on both sides, but...
There's also lawsuits that'll probably end up happening over it, due to the fact that you've seen...
We have the hundred tanks, a hundred percent safe, it's only a thousand gallons.
...to be ignored, don't follow all of those neighborhoods.
Making a tickle, making a muffle.
It's a byproduct. It's an oil, it is a byproduct that's toxic. It's, it's right in, in the light industrial use and definition, period. And it's storage of that in a business zone for a business, which requires it to have a special permit. It's not really, to twist it around the other way is, I mean, really, we just had a girl in here for bat bombs who wanted to manufacture things, and she's mixing things, and she's manufacturing her things, and we're having her come back in for a special permit.
But she's manufacturing.
So you do understand the difference, where she's manufacturing...
It's storage of a byproduct that it, it has toxic waste.
All right, so what he does, right, so he takes oil, just listen, he takes the oil and he puts it in, and then he pumps it up. Where is the toxic byproduct of literally filling and removing?
Have you ever heard of an oil spill?
Okay. So, we're gonna have this round.
So, so that's the byproduct of, of filling a tank?
It could happen, so these...
Okay, all right, we will say, but it's not a byproduct. It isn't.
It could, because fumes come...
But it's not a byproduct.
Do fumes come out, like, do you smell, what, have you ever been next to Pete's oil truck when he's like filling it, filling somebody's tank or anything? No, I have. Not Pete's, but...
Pete doesn't, and I know you're talking about, but he doesn't fill the oil.
Okay, we're going a little off the reservation, so...
You do smell oil.
Is there a...
You do.
I, again, I do not consider, every time I fill my tank, I don't consider myself producing hazardous byproduct. I fill my car, and I don't feel that I produce hazardous byproduct.
Well, you are.
I think that right now, this, this is really where we sit. Mr. Carrington's been asked to come before us to see if he needs anything from us or if he needs to just contact the fire chief.
For the record, I would like to say, and this isn't to make anybody's life different, I'm a fan of leaning back on measure twice, cut once. And if that means a special permit, I don't feel as though that's infringing upon our residents' rights. And that is not to say that that is against you in any way, it is just simply saying it's an extra step in our process to make sure it gets done right, to appease everybody and make sure it's done the right way. However, I understand where you're coming from, and there's a lot of nods at the table, so I get it. Just saying for the record, I'm a measure twice, cut once guy, so I don't see the problem with asking for a special permit. But you can certainly make a motion, and that's why there's five people, because it is a majority vote. So, that's, I'm just saying it for, where my stance is. I'm not quite as passionate on either side of it, I'm just trying to take the thirty thousand foot view.
I think, bottom line, the first place that I personally would start if I wasn't doing the same thing or thinking about doing the same thing, I've had some experience in the past calling the state fire marshal's office to find out what was necessary, what's, what's required, what's part of the building code, 'cause in, in my experience, you know, certain fire resistant wallboard had to be in, there had to be fire traps, there had to be vents, there had to be floor traps, you couldn't park cars within X number of feet from them or not, and I found that all through the state fire marshal's code. So, I think before making a wrong judgment, like you said, putting restrictions on that shouldn't be, or worse, should've put a special permit on that we shouldn't have, I think, I'm all for measuring twice. I think we should start measuring. I think we should start calling and trying to find out.
With the board entertained, ask Mr. Carrington to give us more time. Mr. Carrington, would you allow us, just give us until next thing, we'll run down and get as much information as we can, please.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I ask as a resident that you contact the town's attorney, who actually decided what the light industrial use was, because he actually, the zoning board had to do that, and that's what came back, is that it is a light industrial usage.
That would be part of our measure.
Okay, I'm just asking if we could do that part, I appreciate that.
All right.
I'd like to make that a motion to ask town council if it is a light industrial use.
We do not want to spend our money asking that question, we just wanna get the information from, if they did that at zoning board of appeals, then we have the information here. We don't wanna ask someone who's gonna charge us and tell them when they already told us and gave it to us in paper. You know what I'm saying?
It's a different use, isn't it? Isn't that what y'all're saying? It's a different, it's not the same, it's, this isn't the same.
She wants us, she wants us.
This isn't the same, right?
We were asked to check with the determination that was made by town council. That means in this building, we have that determination. Rather than calling her or him and saying, hey, we'd like that, why don't we track down the piece of paper that we already have? If you get what I'm saying?
I understand, is it, this is different, or is it that it's not?
Because this goes under what Bert was saying, this is a hold there.
I have no idea. All I know is she asked us to check, but instead of calling the lawyer, we're gonna find the piece of paper, 'cause that's cheaper.
No, I...
Right, you see where I'm getting at?
That's fine, that's in the minutes, and I'd also just wanna make one point, is that Mr. Gainer was talking for this project at the last ZBA meeting, so he should be recusing himself for many votes.
I wasn't even on the board then.
You spoke on behalf of the project, and for that reason, you should come do it with his friends.
Hold on, hold on, just, just to clarify, by the same thing, I wouldn't allow you to speak because you spoke on the other, that's not how it works, yeah. He has no interest in this that would require him to step down. Just because he had an opinion on more than one matter does not mean he has to hold opinions in the future.
Okay, I can check with the state on it, that's no problem.
Excellent.
That's what I guess, what?
So, okay, so because he's not, because you're not a resident or a business partner, is that you have nothing gained other than having a...
None whatsoever.
Okay.
You can hold an opinion on every single hundred percent.
I think what she was saying, were you acting as his agent by standing up next to him and helping him through the process?
Acting as...
I'm clarifying, do you understand, I'm trying to clarify.
That's ridiculous, that's the answer's no.
I'm trying to clarify.
I will, thank you. I appreciate it, but you did, so there's no question.
And to, to the point, it's a different, different situation, but I, so because I live in Highland Woods Estates, and there was something about Sherwood, I live on the street next to us, but we're in the same community, I had to ask, even though I was outside of a certain perimeter, should I be recusing myself, because they're my neighbors and we have like a type of thing to do with it? And the answer was no, I didn't need to recuse myself. Obviously a very different situation, but I think that that's what we were just trying to clarify, so. But by all means, the more measuring we can do, the better the process, so.
I just, you know, they have a special permit right now for underground storage, they have a permit, and if you want to store oil above ground, you need a permit. So if there is no special permit, then it needs to go to a special...
So you'd rather, you'd rather see it underground? You'd rather see it underground?
Yeah, I'd rather see it.
All right, I think we will be moving on.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll be doing the due diligence of the investigation, or to find out as much information as we possibly can, between now and the next meeting.
Next meeting.
So that way, we can at least get a better interpretation of what the bylaws say, so we can tell, and at the end of the day, if after two weeks of finding out more information, the answer is, they don't need a special permit, that was because there was a ton of research done, and then that just has to meet up with us.
Exactly, if that's what it is, that's fine, but it, it needs to...
And if it's not, and it does need to be, to Bert's point...
Please.
There we go.
Please.
Well, it was funny at time when I think it was okay to wrap up in a similar, so.
I appreciate it, yeah. So moving on to, actually, status messages, emails from concerned residents.
This is your fire.
Am I premature to make a motion on this?
Maybe a little.
Really? After five, how many years have we been talking about this?
No.
Okay, so what I have here is a, my email that went out the Friday before the Fourth of July to, to, I believe, everybody in the community that was copied in on that email. I received an email back from Tina, sorry, Tina Kenyon, who said that, um, the fact of the matter is there is a covenant that stated that the street must finish the, must be finished within two years of the sale of the property. This is the town's job to enforce. I wanna be very clear with what my stance or my view on this is. The planning board does not have the, the right to enforce the next step of this. So I would like to make a motion that we move this to, all the way up to the selectmen if we have to, in order to enforce this. Because this keeps coming across our desk, and the residents' frustration is duly noted and understandable.
Right.
Not understandable, because I don't live there, so not even understandable, but it is absolutely heard, and I feel as though to, for the sake of, of giving them a piece of... And I feel as though to, for the sake of giving them a peace of mind of progress, I would like to kick this up to the people that have a higher pay grade than us. Now, who that might be, you may be able to enlighten me on who that is, but this is no longer something that we have the ability to control.
I agree where we seem to not be able to enforce it. And even when I spoke about this last time, I don't think I was totally clear on the process, where I mentioned that we take the property and walk the block. All of that was based off of the letter, as I mentioned, that it seemed like he was going to resolve all interest, right? Which, to specify what I meant by, that means he would have to abandon all interest. He would still have to stop payment on all the taxes, and that's how we would get the thing. Based off his letter, it sounded like he was abandoning all interest, right? He was saying, "It's not my deal, it's not my thing, I don't want anything to do with it." In order for us to go through the process I explained, that still would require him to not pay any taxes. That's the only way that the town can take that piece of property that we have.
Even though he's not the original owner and things of that nature.
The only way for the town to take possession of that property would be if he defaulted on taxes. That's it.
Is there a way to get in writing from him that he is, in writing, abandoning the property?
We got something pretty close to it. Then that's why I was saying, it sounds like off of this, but that's a very timely process. As far as kicking this to someone who has actual power over it, I agree.
Who is it?
I don't, I do not know. I would say selectmen only because they have more resources than we do. Even if they are not the final person, they would be more apt to find out who or how.
And would, I'm almost borderline afraid to ask this question. Would the residents feel as though that is enough progress that we are recognizing?
Not even close.
Alright, within...
That this is the, out of our hands, and we are trying to move it into somebody that does have the ability to move.
Alright, so we have, at a certain point, obviously, we're trying to make the best for the people. We have no power to do that. As far as what, so we make them, I think at a certain point, we, you know, it could be nice to make the...
Joe, we send it to the, so we send this to the selectmen, what do the selectmen do?
So, we just think...
I've never come to this junction on the subdivision before, so I, I do not know. All I know is we have a bond. The only way to get bond is to do the thing, and the only way to get the money is to get the lot, and the only way to get the lot release is to get it by taxes.
So, even though it's a bond versus lot thing, we just sent it to zoning enforcement for Sherwood? So, maybe we send it to both zoning enforcement and to the selectmen, because then he could maybe enforce something upon them, and go to the selectmen, and it would be like a team effort kind of a thing.
Sorry, right, get everybody on board, get everybody aware of it. Get everybody on, they're trying to do something. We're trying to push.
So, if you, just so I understand what I know, I've been saying this for the last three weeks. But anyway, what's the sense of putting up the lot? If we couldn't because of not fulfilling the requirements of the bond slash, what's the sense of putting a lot up if the only way we can get the lot is through taxes?
It doesn't seem like that would make sense. That doesn't make sense to me.
Or, that's it. That's it, no more lots, it's a bond only, period, you're putting taxes up.
So, I believe the reason it came up that way is because it worked temporarily. So, there were a couple of examples where it worked.
Doesn't sound like it ever worked, if you ask me.
When has it worked?
Yeah, it didn't work.
It's never worked. It's the stupidest thing I ever heard anybody do, was do something like that instead of having a...
But, there have been times where it worked. There are a lot of subdivisions in town, they got built that way. It all was based off the value of the lot. So, when the values of lots dropped, or once you develop everything except for the least desirable lot, most likely the lot that required the most amount of site work, that was the one that would always be undeveloped.
Is that what happened at Highland? Did they use a lot up there, or did they put up a bond? It was a bond.
They do bonds too.
So, hold on, Mark, do you know one, and this is how, like, I'm not being sly or like snide or anything, do you know of a subdivision in town that completely finished that used a lot?
Yeah, where's this, where's the list?
Because Deli Way is not done.
Have you got it?
Pasty Lane's not done. You know what I...
I know they changed it. What's the one right off of Franklin Street there? And then the spring construction job?
Kenzie's Path.
Kenzie's Path.
They did a land, they did a lot?
I believe so.
So, they finished it, probably just delayed. I mean, there's always somebody that just wants to clean it up and go.
So, obviously, when things are moving, then there are a lot of examples, and I might not be able to pull them up.
No, 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 I wouldn't be, I wanted to know if you knew of one, because I didn't know of a subdivision that had a lot held that finished all the way. So, that's honestly what I was asking you. I didn't have that information.
Yeah, so, like I said, it did work a certain amount of years, you know?
I think the big mistake is using the worst lot in the subdivision.
That was it, right.
I mean, if they took the best lot in the subdivision and held that, it'll get done.
That's why I mentioned that it's typically the least desirable.
Yeah, it's the least desirable. No, they're never gonna do that again.
So, just say your name. Take my good fork, Pasty Lane. Did Mr. Parkhead have a car tractor or work order when he came and butchered the street and cut down the trees and left them on the side of the road? I can do it on his own.
That, I assume, was an attempt to make it better. I don't know.
You don't know?
He didn't need to pull a permit or any intent to stop that work. So, I can go down each one of your streets and dig a hole and drive away?
If he still owned the property and then took down the trees, that would certainly be...
That's not his property.
Right.
Not his property.
I'm not sure which piece of property you're discussing. You're talking about on a certain homeowner?
No, not his lot, down the end of the street at the basin.
Yeah.
He cut out the trees and left them on the side of the road, and then he chiseled them out of the sewers and drains, left big holes, and they just drove away. So, he didn't need to pull a permit?
No, because that's, that's part of the process he's already in. So, the clearing of the drainage, he owns, he owns that.
The rights to do that?
Yeah, that's, yeah, so that is part of the... We, I think we can all agree that it didn't come out well, but that is underneath, that is covered under development of the road. It doesn't look good, but that, that's, that's what he was supposed to do. It was just supposed to...
But why did you guys let him do all that work and then leave?
We didn't let him do it. So, I need to be very clear that we didn't let him do anything.
Is he responsible to repair the damage that he did?
No, Gordon said, "If you do that, I'll give you the permit."
It's a five-member board, though.
So, there was, hold on, hold on, before we get... There was a list that was given to him of a checklist to complete, okay? Which, to my knowledge, you guys weren't there for that conversation. I know everything's recorded, and you can watch it on YouTube or whatever it is. There was a checklist, and he came here, he sat right there, and he gave us the checklist and said, "If I do all of this stuff, everything will be finished."
Wait, we did send it for peer review, and we were waiting for that peer review to come back to make sure that everything would be agreed upon by the engineer when he was finished.
Right. And the big thing that he was here for, to ask, was permission to not have to do a third layer, because he only needed two layers. So, that was there. Hold on. Just let me, let me recount my memory of it, so that we're all on the same page. Because I feel as though...
Why is it a memory? Why don't you have anything like on paper?
We do, they're in the minutes, they're in the minutes.
Minutes, okay.
Yeah, they're in minutes. What I'm trying to do is, is I'm trying to clear up the finger pointer, because there's a lot of, "This is your fault towards us," or "towards somebody that's not even here anymore," when, and then it's "our responsibility to enforce," right? Which is what I circled in this email. He was here to ask permission because of the cost of roads and what the actual regulation is to finish the road, right? And to remove the requirement to have a third layer on the street and only have two layers, which is all it requires to complete the road. Within the preparation of completing that road, digging the holes around the drainage and the sewage and such of that nature, as far as cutting down the trees and leaving them on the side, as far as I'm concerned, there's no excuse for that. That's a big point. So, in the, in this, for the sake of, hold on, for the sake of the last conversation we had with Mr. Prickett, who obviously has no interest in showing up or even having any involvement in this anymore, the last statement was, "Here's a to-do list that is needed to complete." He said, "This is what I'm looking to do." We said, "Yes, if you complete that list, everything will be done," and we finally completed. That's what was granted permission for, was that to-do list. Now, got through step whatever, one or two out of fifteen on the list, and then decided, which are the words I probably can't say because we're being recorded, but it doesn't land in the favor of the residents. So, what I'm now saying is because he has clearly shown that he was not interested, and the last communication we had with him was that this was a to-do list, and he only got through one or two and abandoned the rest, we from here on out do not have the jurisdictional rights to enforce anything on him.
So, he's not responsible to repair the...
I'm not saying that. That's what you're not hearing. What I'm saying is, is that we at this board can say, within the bylaws, "Here's the to-do list that you need to complete." He walks up the door, starts it, abandons it. Then you guys come and say, "What the F, what the H, sorry."
But you just said you didn't give him a to-do list.
Show that to him.
You just said, "No, you did give him the to-do list, all of you."
There was a list that was needed to be completed, okay? In order for the project to be completed. That list apparently was started, which on the list is to cut out around the drainage and to... So, all I'm saying...
No, just one second.
Hey, hold on, hold on. No, you're not going to talk, move, finish.
Who supervised the list?
You need to walk out.
Here's one second. Is, we have to be careful that we, both sides, both you guys and us, don't wait to speak, but we actually listen. Because otherwise, this yelling at each other isn't going to work, because we could all be doing... All I'm saying is, we all could be doing other things other than getting yelled at, okay? I don't even understand how to comprehend your frustration. What I'm asking you to hear is that the list that was given or was agreed upon for completion of the project was clearly abandoned. We am now, we are now, or I am now telling you, we do not have the right, we are not the people, to hold him accountable. What I would like to do is kick it to, up to the selectmen, who have many more resources to hold Mr. Prickett responsible and figure out a more in-depth way to get this done for you guys. Does that solve the trees on the side of the road? Absolutely not. Does it solve the cones on the street? Absolutely not. But what we can't do is keep doing this.
So, what are we talking for a timeframe?
I don't understand why. I think at this point, as a board, I think we're going to make a motion, or I would accept a motion, to notify both the selectmen and the zoning enforcement officer that we would like cooperation to move forward with this project.
Okay, so one more time.
On, hop, that's it.
I'll move it.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I will second that. All those in favor?
I would like to make one small discussion point, just as a couple of points beforehand. Number one, that list was going to peer review, and it wouldn't have been just us deciding on it, do you remember that, Rick? Remember that? So, it wasn't just us giving that list. I think that's very important to note right here. And, what was my second point? The second point was that... Anyways, that's the one that I really wanted to make sure, is that I'll come up with it.
The other thing is true, that list that was out there, I believe it had a price tag on it of $156,000, and that was back in 2018, so four years ago. This, which, I'm not, I'm not saying that it's a good reason why, but probably why he only got through two or three and then said, "The heck with this, I'm out of here." You know?
Yeah, and that's the thing, we were going to make him get a bond. Remember? We were going to make him get a bond, and that's the second point I wanted to make, and thank you for bringing that up.
So, now, we have...
That's, so, I just wanted to say what the board did to try and help. Yes, thank you.
So, now, we do have a motion.
It was seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Joining people who dropped the letter to the selectmen.
Do I have the right to call the selectmen personally and discuss this matter individually? Do I have that right?
Yeah.
I don't know.
Individually? As long as I don't have to call them.
I mean, if you want to show up to the meeting or whatnot?
Yeah. So, I would like to have a conversation, as I told you that I would in my email back to you, to have a conversation with the selectmen individually to let them know that this is not just something else to be on their agenda, that you guys have come voiced your, many times to these meetings, and that this is not something to be taken lightly or to be passed over, but something that needs to go to the top of their list. Is that at least, that's all I can do. Is that at least enough?
Well, just that, but can I also get a letter stating that the street is safe for vehicle and pedestrian use?
Yeah, we need to find it.
Because I talked to somebody that's high up, and he asked me to see if I can get that from the town.
How would you talk to the highway department?
Yeah, because again, that's not something that we can do.
That's not, yeah, exactly, that's week one.
You could just give out to-do things to people and not supervise them.
Alright, so that's the end of this.
That's what I don't get. See how you keep sort of cutting me off because you know I'm right? You gave a to-do list to a total stranger, you let him rip up our road.
Amen, please.
And you said nothing. This gentleman said, "How did the trees get..."
Hey, what do you want, move on up?
I did not...
Come on.
They knew though, they knew it even for you.
Relax, everybody relax.
You're both liars, all of you.
The best way to do this is not, relax, relax, relax. Alright, so...
Breathe.
Well, that motion passed, so next level, this would be bills, right?
Yeah, would, did everyone mind? I think I would just make a motion to adjourn at this moment. If anyone doesn't mind taking this up the next...
Would we like to take a...
Should we pay the bill? Yeah, let's do that.
I'll make a motion and remove bills, the meeting minutes, correspondence, and other business on the agenda for this meeting, and move it to the next meeting. How's that?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, all those in favor? Aye.